What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at the brand new PKO tools that were released by pre flop academy. So let's give it a shot. So I started already, it's on the trainer. So we see here we have the bounty, we have the amount of big blinds. We have how much left in the money and then we have the stack depth. So we're gonna try to figure out what we should do here. So since so since I thought it was gonna be like all in reshove and then we would have a range whether we push or not, but it's that's not really how it is, at least not the five first hand that played. So I think here I would call.
Yeah.
I think we just said mine and we like pre flop academy is not both lap. So we're just gonna have a response for pre flop. It goes all the all the ways here, all in, raise small and call.
So we're actually in the money, right?
No, we are forty seven to the money.
I know it's forty seven in the money and there are three hundred eighty players left.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is first level. No one's busted.
Yeah.
So the first hand but those two.
Yeah. So. This should be our strategy or less. We can call down to like suited sevens because he lost already half of his stack. So. Offsuit nines are too wide, but like Jack ten off are supposed to play here. Just because we cover.
Jack ten O is not to be right. That's that's gotta be a PKO thing.
Yeah, I think the the one point three nine is the bounty value to chip stack two.
Jack ten O in there.
Yeah, well, let's have a quick look. And let's see. So here we have something like.
Hey, it's probably a bit wider. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, you can make thirty because it's the guy with the that's open is thirty.
Alright. So thirty effective.
Yeah, this is when you gotta kind of middle, you gotta kinda look at thirty and sixty and kinda figure out where you wanna be.
Yeah, it's mainly.
If it's in there at thirty, it's in there at sixty, it's definitely good. If it's in there at thirty, all it's sum at sixty, it's in the middle.
Is the opener not thirty or?
Alright, so this is the strategy.
Opener is playing at thirty effective.
So that should be V.
Yeah, we don't do tons of.
Kind of similar, right?
Raising ace five instead of calling.
Look at this here, look at the suited seven. So that's already the difference. At chippy V, we don't overcall with the sevens from the small blind. Whereas here we're gonna flag all of these.
So suited tens. What about like the suited suited one gappers?
The nine, seven, nine, six.
They're in our.
Eight, six.
All your kings, all your shooting kings, most of your shooting queens.
You want to be able to get a hand that can go all in. I mean, that's.
Yeah, here versus.
It expands on this.
One pip wider on the calling.
At least.
On the suited side.
On the suited side.
Oh, the suited side, you got you're all the way over to nine, six, they have nine.
No, it's the size is too big wider.
Yeah, Ken, you're using king, you're using all your kings, suited kings. So it's two pips wider there, all your your queen four, queen five, queen six, queen seven, that's a good bit wider. Two pips wider, here nine, six.
It's not a clear two pips wider, it's one pip wider, but the suited one gappers are added in.
Very interesting.
Two gappers.
Right.
All all the all the hands that can be good all in there. I mean.
That's where you expand indeed, the hands that can get.
Yes. So far, I think everything is in on that like level three kind of spot.
Yeah, because it's.
It might change, right? It might change. We'll see. This one suited fire, I think it's a bit too wide.
I agree.
Yeah.
Oh, but Jack five though, what? Not the I'm not the.
Jack five first is good showing, Jack, yeah.
You're against the button.
Let's make another comparison comparison.
That's way out of rage, I think, for chippy V.
And not way out, Jack or something, Jack eight.
Probably Jack seven or Jack eight.
We are looking at a button raise and we're in a small blind. Then let's compare ranges.
At Jack seven.
So Jack five, Jack six, queen five.
Yeah, it's expanding the the suited ones. I mean, yeah, and the gut shots.
Wow, I am not playing like that at all.
Me neither, most time aren't flowing.
All the suited kings, all the suited queens from this.
Nine off.
Jeez.
All nine off.
Morning.
And so and so and so far, we just started bounty. Imagine if if the guy have a lot of money on him.
I'm not raising, you're raising all suit nines LP.
Oh, yeah. Also nice.
Oh, you're looking at the new PKI ranges?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was doing this this morning and it seems like if you cover, you open about a pip wider and if you're covered by everyone, you tighten as much as a pip.
It seems to be more than a pip on the suited side quite a bit.
Yeah, we are looking at the calling range actually.
It also has some has to have some value with the value of the bounty.
When you played it this morning, did you notice some insane calling range from the small blind?
No, I honestly, I didn't go too too in the weeds with it.
Look, you're all in range here, king A. Or king A, queen A, jack A, like they're not all in chippy V.
I don't look at the jams yet, Ken, because I'm in shock.
About how wide you're calling?
Do you know how many PKOs I play in a day?
A lot, but you don't study it enough.
Playing these ranges, you'll get to play twice as many.
No, not twice.
Do it again.
To be honest, though, I mean, are you just piling an ace five offsuit here? Like, that seems that seems crazy to me.
Well, it's like we're trying to.
Only forty bigs, I mean.
Insane.
Cover everyone.
Hey, what's the uh? Yeah, what's the number in red? What are those coefficients?
That seems it seems to be a ratio between the.
The number in red is the bounty value compared to your stack. Like the higher the that number is, the better it is to call him off for a bounty.
Ah, okay, that makes some sense.
Because like his his stack is about half a stack compared to.
Oh, that's the bounty power number.
Yes.
The bounty what?
That one, power number.
Power number?
Yeah.
Some some players, some courses, they call it the bounty power number.
Yeah, Matt F like uses bounty power number.
It's the average stack and then how much your bounty is, that's one. And then if your stack is lower, then you get.
That's one is an.
Or if you have two bounties and a starting chip stack, then your bounty powers two.
Yeah.
Going on in here seems to be insane.
Yeah.
I think I think this is high.
This is what the thing I think. Not sure why.
So Louis, Louis, right now in your game, what do you do with pocket sixes here?
I'm plotting.
I'm also plotting, yeah, I would also.
You don't wanna isolate the big bounty?
Yeah, see, I was gonna say, I think I've I I not all in three bets sometimes to isolate the the twenty five guy because I'm okay running equity versus that.
I'm okay, yeah, it's raising, that's fine. It's a bit spicy, I think I would raise like sevens.
Yeah.
Okay, but the problem is I don't wanna shove here and risk forty five. This guy.
A lot of chips, right?
Oh, the.
Yeah, but you gotta look at your bounty is low.
Okay.
Yeah, but you cover everyone, I saw.
I was right, I would call here.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Fours though.
Wow.
You you are a sliver of all it.
Yeah, sliver of raise.
It's bad man to jam here and then this guy just wake up with king and then here you are, the two hundred fifty dollar booty.
On the other hand, he has to fold.
So LP, how I thought about it was if he's opening off suit eights, I could jam seven, sixes, fives, fours, threes, twos. That's what I was thinking.
Louis, you have to stop thinking about bounties and absolute turns and start understanding the relative value of the bounty with your chip stack, your two hundred fifty bounty is worth less than the cutoff's two hundred fifty bounty.
Sure, but it doesn't matter. How does?
I don't I don't understand that.
Compared to the number of big blinds you have to spend to get the bounty.
I think it it just seems like it's a ratio of like a starting stack and a starting bounty.
It is, but what when this when the ratio is low, your bet the additional equity they get to add to call you off is lower.
In this case, they don't offer you, so it doesn't matter.
You because to get the two hundred fifty chips from the cutoff, you only have to risk twenty three big blinds to get the two fifty bounty from Louis, you gotta risk, they got they'd have to risk their whole stack and nobody can even get it.
No one can get the bounty.
His is unavailable.
Right, yeah. So they're not incentivized to call off.
Yeah, they have to fold and that kind of stuff probably. An ace jack even.
Yeah, but I think.
Maybe maybe even ace queen in this.
If I was if I was twenty twenty five effective, thirty effective, it would not be a problem. You can shove this at thirty, it's nuts, it's fine, but risking sixty here, I think, or forty five.
What I'm interested in is if we go all in, what are the small blind and big blind supposed to call off with?
Well, I mean, they should be pretty respectful, Yoss, I would say.
That's what I mean.
They gotta be top of range, right?
I don't know, like, okay, like small blind, what do you think the floor of their calling overcalling range is? Maybe eights, nines or something?
No, they're gonna be.
Might be in there.
Like, if well, they're gonna be in there with all kinds of garbage. Well, if we flat, of course, I'm talking about like if we jam Pete. Um, he doesn't cover us, so he's probably gonna be linear. Yeah, that's what I was saying. Yeah, they gotta be a little respectful, right? So we had fifty or we have sixty and then, yeah, that's it right there.
Well, I mean, they have to be super linear because they're calling or cold calling a three bet jam and they're covered, they gotta be super linear.
Right, so they should be playing top of range. So I mean, I would imagine it's like ace, jack suited maybe plus.
Top five, five percent, six percent, something like that.
They don't even have it.
So if you do multi way or do, hold on one second, let me look at this, look at cold four range.
Oh, no, nine is now.
So you gotta look at the pre flop razor, the three betters on the button, so put the button. And then cut off. So there should be a jam range associated with this. So small blind versus four bet all in from the button, we're calling eights is indifferent. So we were intuitively correct about that. Ace, jack suited is a bit wide.
Five percent.
Ace, queen. Yeah, so you were right, Ken, but it's about five percent of the range, you know?
So we do it with what sixes, but if you guys like eights, he's running into it and then we're just it's kind of an expensive spot.
Yeah.
That's why I'd much rather just call here.
But I wonder if people are even following a screen. I don't think so.
Probably not, yes.
Call.
I like, I think we take a flop here because we have access to this bounty, although this is pretty scary.
Gotta be bottom of range, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Eight five, I'm out.
Okay, okay.
Call even, yeah.
Then let's compare with the chippy V solution just for fun. So it's like twenty five, but then cut off, tie jack.
Connectors.
So, yeah, I mean, at twenty five, it should even pull out the suited connectors almost.
Yeah. About opening eight six.
Yeah, our opening range isn't even as wide.
So, yeah.
One bit.
Get the five, six, six, seven, seven, eight. The king five, like you're three pips wider with your kings. And you're about three pips wider with your suited queens too.
Yeah, but not flushes and that kind of stuff go up in value a lot.
Yeah, we've seen the suited kings and queens be wider in every sim so far.
Even jacks.
High, low, suited, it really likes them. Even just defending like small blind was defending that crap. Versus the late position.
You know, it'd be fun to do, Ken, is replicating one of these these beta tables in HRC to compare how HRC is doing.
Yeah, we'll have to get to that for sure.
I think that would be very valuable. This is this is too much, I think, Louis. Yeah, we're covered also, there's just.
Yes, okay, fine, but where's the floor? King, queen? Definitely.
I would say.
Definitely. This is probably the.
King, jack off?
Yeah.
I would say king, jack suited.
Oh, we don't we don't cover, man, we don't cover.
Yeah, so fold.
That's what I'm saying. If we if we covered, I would be I'd be on board with you, but I think we need to be a smidge tighter.
On the on the on the forgetting me is the guy is playing a GTO or is it can be a random dunk?
GTO.
GTO.
Their sims.
So.
This might be close because he's should be pretty wide here, I think.
King, queen off and the king, jack suited is my vote.
I think king, jack's in there. I think this is close. It feels dirty, but I mean, he's gotta be, he's probably really wide.
If you send me a spot and I will run it in HRC.
Yeah.
This is sites been down on this morning.
Yeah.
What you looking for?
Pick your bounty calculator. It's a it's a down, down, down.
One more down, range analyzer, okay.
What's the worst king we call here?
I'm gonna say king, jack off.
King, queen off, king, jack suited.
I am king, queen off. Ace ten off, you say, Ken?
Yeah, maybe ace nine some.
Oh, I think we're probably good. I think we're ace nine, ace nine off, I think it's pretty.
Ace nine, king, jack off. King, nine suited.
It's thirty bigs who don't cover. I don't think king and suited is in there, but I think king ten. I don't know.
All my suit broadways, I got I got Jack ten shooting, queen ten suited.
I like this range. This is probably down to sixes, I would say.
I feel like five, maybe six.
Nine versus blind, nine versus blind.
I'm in there with fives, I'm in there with queen ten, jack ten suited as well.
Not me.
Nah, no.
And king nine. And ace five.
On the other hand, he can jam wider indeed because he covers us, so we can call off also wider.
Man, Ken, when did I get so wide?
Ken, Ken.
I'm not I'm not sure about the ace nine off.
I'm pretty confident. Pretty confident.
Even they say, I can't even dig down to a say. Because.
This is blind versus blind? It is blind versus blind, Pete. He's gonna be like.
Thirty thirty one, baby.
He's gonna be wider, like, we're gonna call wider than this.
Yeah, he's wider than normal than for chippies.
His top of range is raised is gonna raise jam or raise call, so he's he's lacking top.
Wait, wait, yeah, your bounty is high, so he's shoving wide.
Yeah, you you guys are nets.
Yeah, you have to call off wider, probably.
What is?
It's.
Alright, so let's compare.
Pretty good.
What? Yeah, we weren't awful. I was off with the offsuit aces.
Ken was actually, Ken was actually pretty close.
Too wide, I was a little nitty with the pocket pairs.
Oh, look at this, look at this ace.
Little nitty with the offsuit ace.
I wasn't sure about ace A.
I I would have missed the offsuit aces in the small pairs.
So.
Baka deuce.
Hey, what's the what's their jamming range, though? Like, how outlet how landish is this jamming range? I think is a good question to ask.
I I think if you click the the I bowl we come, you can see.
Nine shooters in there.
If we're calling when nineteen percent.
Okay, I mean, this is not too unrealistic, to be honest, like, there's the.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of a wild card.
Because they're all in is all hands below our range.
But this is reasonable.
Yeah, that's too crazy, right?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
Okay, so calling off with, this is the outlier first, but king, queen, we had it, king, jack, we had the folds. A bit more aces.
If you look at that, you see that the solve is not.
All in.
Very, very deep.
I like all in here.
Second, run it right.
easiest. Alright, and what's his calling range just for fun? Kind of hand does he flat call like this? Okay, so barely near.
I mean, PKO would probably call, right?
Yeah, call.
Minimum call.
I would fold a lot, I would folding game like a chippy, but you're folding, right?
No.
No.
You're still calling chippy V?
Yeah, you're trying to scam them.
You're just trying to flop a set in position, you close, you're the last guy to. You're, yeah, you're you close position, Ken, so you 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 will be pretty wide calling there.
So cutoff, you would fold or no? If there was two, if there was a early position open or a position call, you.
You probably still call, Ken, but it's closer.
Alright.
I think this is a good three squeeze. I like squeezing here. I like squeeze jamming.
Yeah. Squeezes are more on the suited side when we are squeezed.
Yeah, we cover, we can squeeze because.
No, you're you're right, Ken. Recently, like, I I looked at some of these big blind squeezes and they get a little more froggy with the offsuit than like the rest of the field does.
It's the aces on the offsuit and it's all the other suited stuff.
You're right.
The aces, I forget.
Yep, you're right.
I'm pretty sick squeezing here.
Yeah, the off.
Yeah, but they they don't cover us, that's why they can't play for bounty.
The suited nines is pretty wild there. I would do suited tens. Um, I kind of like calling here.
I'm with you. Let's mix it.
I just don't know what I do versus.
Well, ten, ten, sevens, suited.
You gotta call for us to jam, you got uncovered, I think.
Man, I'm calling here because we have access to the bounty and it's like a third of our chips.
So wait, he opens, is this a three bet from the big blind?
Yes, it is. We're getting scammed.
I'm.
The bounty, though, man.
King nine, I'm in there.
The bounty value is high too.
King nine, I'm in, king eight, I'm out.
I don't know about that, guys, honestly.
Holy shit.
But.
I don't play PKOs, this is it, like, this is the shit I gotta do, like.
I was looking at this and I'm like, okay, this is an easy fold in my mind, but is there anything we can do? And then it's like suited eight, really?
I guess it's not up to us.
It's actually not far off.
No, look at the suited sevens.
Okay.
No, 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 you can just like, this is like this.
We pulled up that other range, I thought we were calling everything, I was like, what the fuck?
Louis, look at, what about king nine? Are you?
With his bounty power, you can add seven percent.
King nine, king ten in game, I'm like not calling, but it's a PKO. So since it's a PKO, yeah, sure, maybe I can extend the king, makes sense, but king eight? King eight seems like we're looking for trouble.
Yeah, but you call the cheeks.
Bad end of the stick.
We are looking for trouble, Louis, fold.
Yeah, if we had him cover, we could probably.
Okay, yeah, if we cover, we call.
Yeah, if you don't call, we fold. No, you even call now.
Yeah, this is a sliver.
It razor fold.
It's gonna be here, it's gonna be.
I'm raising.
This this is gonna be in the race, it's gonna be a race to.
This guy, he's dreaming about us doing something like that.
Offsuit deuces, man, like, I full, I I just, I, this is my check, I'm just calling.
Still gonna have limp fold, so I'm folding.
Yeah, it's gonna be in a right, oh. See, all a lot of the races are coming from twos as bluffs.
Man.
Yeah, nine deuces is just a.
Yeah.
See, I'm a liar.
Whenever I think about this strategy, I'm more like in this area and this area is more like, yeah, no.
The worse your head is, the more shit he's got to fold.
Yeah, kind of. Okay.
Not all in, yeah.
Yeah.
If he's a if he doesn't have a folding range, you just jam if it's at a final table. That's that's the play with the.
So if you miss this game, we're forty seven, there's forty seven in the morning, there's three hundred and eighty players left, so this is just pure like early state, this is like first level.
It's yeah, chippy V.
I know, I'm just joking. It was a it was a comment about my hand last night and I lost. I see, I see, I see, I see, I in the money forty.
Oh, I remember the queen's hand, yeah, yeah, that sucked, right into kings, right?
No, right into king, jack.
Oh, right, right, bo ray. Oh, row. Row, row. Jack off, call. All this three bet jam, oh my god.
Alright, give me a sec, guys, I just spilled my coffee all over the place.
I need to refill anyway.
And it was a.
Alright, I'll get some more coffee.
Oh, my goodness.
Louis, I don't know how you make a mess. I don't know how your electronics work personally, because like you do this at least once a week.
He just said he bought a new keyboard probably because he spilled coffee on the in the last one.
He buys a new keyboard.
I bought a new keyboard because he has like insects in his keyboard, laying nests. Yeah, they're they've made a home.
Alright.
I put a message in chat to the mad F like video where he teaches about bounty power. I think if you're gonna play PKOs, it's important to understand what he teaches in that video.
See, the problem with it is, like, it's such a new way of doing things, like, there's a couple different ways people do the whole bounty thing, like, bounty power was like one of the ways and then like bit B, they do a different way where they just have like some kind of corrective factor. I mean, I guess it's the same way of saying different things.
It's the same way, actually.
Just different way to do the same thing.
Yeah.
It's it's a similar thing, you should say, it's not the same, it's similar.
Yeah, that's that's fair, Yoss.
Alright, alright. Next.
And and I agree, we actually don't know yet how to play PKOs.
Chip V, but this is probably gonna call.
Isn't it?
I mean, I would fold all day chippy V, but this.
Future game. No ID, yeah.
It can make a straight, play on the other end of the board, feels good.
How can it make a straight, can it?
And also this says a simulation, so yeah, they don't include the future game, so.
You got them covered.
It's very hard.
It's the bottom.
Yep. Yeah, seven two, you can't make a straight, seven three is like the last bottom, it is the bottom, yeah.
Okay.
For tipping up and covering people, it's not.
This can versus small blind, probably mixes.
This makes it. I'm definitely raising this. These are like the bread and butter combos I like to raise, these high, low offsuit combos.
Yeah.
Like, I'm all in there with these guys, the queens and the kings of the world.
There's no all in.
No, that's what I mean, like, all in raising, not raising all in, sorry, I should.
Okay.
I like raising this combo.
I'm limping.
I'm not limping.
All in.
I don't know if I wanna. This one have a sliver of all ends, I think it's gonna, I think this is gonna do all three of this one, actually. Just a sliver of jabs.
I'm still calling.
The all ends.
No.
There's a sliver of nine, there's a sliver of nine, seven, ten.
There's a lot of jamming, I didn't expect that much from like those suited connectors.
King four suited.
So ten, seven is a bit too good, ten, six, just for some reason.
What is he cooking?
We're making eggs.
Easy call, right?
Yeah.
Is it ever raised? Probably not.
Oh, look at how tight we are because we're super covered here. Oh, look at the outside we are, because we're super covered here.
Making eggs, or breaking eggs.
This one look, look, chippy V one.
Yeah, because uh, I'm curious.
It's still in chippy V.
What?
That's, that's just still gonna call in chippy V.
Yeah.
Think chippy V were a bit wider, where at, at least one pip wider.
It's gonna raise more chippy V than call, it's gonna raise more than it is, is here, I should say. It's not still, it's not gonna raise four, but it's still, it's gonna raise more, I think.
What do you guys think is the difference?
Uh, it's.
Uh, it's because the guy, it's because the guy behind is uh, have more chip than us, so it's gonna be less.
Can also be the same, that's the.
But, but DS or. I don't know, is it, is that white word, but is, this one is less, but DS.
Dooly, that red number is the bounty power. It's a comparison of their, of the value of their bounty to the starting stacks. So the higher the red number, the better the bounty is.
So nine eight plays the same. I thought it would raise a bit more in chippy V.
Thanks.
It's marginal, and it's all in the same uh. Expectation, yeah, I would call it uh, similar.
So here's the first time we can notice we're a bit tighter with our suited kings. Actually.
Yeah.
So we can say that.
He's calling off wide because it covers us, so we must be.
It's growing your position, he's opening high, Jack.
Less, we three bet less because he can shove wider. And that's.
Yeah, so you said, yeah, so if we are three betting more, then we're gonna have the king five, king six into three bets and more calls, so the three bets would expand our, our range all around, right, we'd be pips wider.
Yeah, if you are covered, you are tighter, and you're calling at uh, at least three betting, for sure. Calling, I don't know. Probably calling also because we get a lot of pressure. Both floss.
That's, seems pretty generally good there, LP.
Yeah, but it's not, I've noticed that it's not really, we're not really one pip wider in the offsuit area, it's a quarter of a pip or alpha.
Yeah, it's less than a pip.
Well, the, well, the broad, the offsuit Broadway stayed in there, uh, all the time, right?
Not, no, no.
Covered.
We'll see, you'll see what I mean, cause I've noticed that it's, it's gonna add two pips uh suited before it adds a quarter of a pip. Offsuit.
I see what you're saying.
So we call here. Happy days.
Happy days. You can call white, maybe we shove.
I'm always jamming here.
Yeah, me also, and especially, yeah.
When his bounty is close to one. It's actually fairly close to chippy V.
Uh, we don't cover him, so his bounty doesn't matter for us.
Alright, yeah.
Our bounty.
So then, we should be.
Have to go wide, so.
We should be slightly tighter then.
No. Yeah, but.
But H king, H king going in, so.
Yeah, we can jam for value. I think.
It's more uh.
So we jam more.
More aces, this is like ICMish, kinda like, we wanna start with our high cards or jamming a bit wider, I think, and then.
We are jamming linear, right?
Yeah, it's.
So we got ace nine off in their full suit up, full, full down, LP.
They're kinda similar.
And uh, king queen, king queen off kinda bails out a little bit, so it's a little bit more aces.
It could just be based on like what sizings each one uses.
So you went.
It's also PKO, so it's a difference.
Okay, so let's compare the ranges quickly. So this is chippy V, thirty big blinds, and this is PKO.
Uh, so we have PKO, it's king jack suited, preferred of king ten, it's a better hand.
So we jam less, is that right? Here we go, all in twenty-four percent, here we go, all in.
It's shifting towards high cards. The aces, some of the kings drop out, some of the pairs drop out, the king, and the worst kings slide up a pip.
You, you also have to look that there could be differences based on the different raise sizings. GTA wizard uses two point one, where pre-flop academy is using two point two five, so that's gonna change the math slightly in a, a little bit.
Well, Joey, you said when the bounty power is close to one, it's gonna be close to chippy V.
Yeah.
These range are very similar, so let's see if this is a thing, right, because uh, the range seems to be close, right, this is one pip wider.
It's like, when it's at one, you can add like two percent equity to a call. So you can go a touch wider.
Well, it's going, well, see here, it doesn't add up, Joey, because here, this is your chippy V.
So.
If, it should be, since the bounty power is a bit higher, it should be a bit wider, but we see it's a bit.
Louis, the first thing that pops out to me is you don't have the bluffs, you're.
We can't get his bounty.
You're not.
At one point, that is irrelevant, because we can't get his bounty.
That's right, so since we don't cover, we are tighter.
Zero plus when you don't cover, all you're, real aces, and like the ace six is out. And you're a little bit tighter with your shooting kings, you're not wearing, you know, you're.
Even your middle pairs are not jamming, you have sixes and fives.
You're, they're blocking bottom of their open range.
From what I remember with bounty power numbers, at num, at one. It's about, you add about one to two percent equity. Um, to your call.
Yeah.
So like, if you, if you need forty percent equity to call, you can push it up to forty-two percent. At one, you can add five to six percent at two. And ten to eleven percent if the bounty power's three.
Here, I'll dig, I'll dig up a resource, hold on.
Top tables for that, indeed, I think I have also those tables somewhere.
I think I would go all in here.
That last sim, I think, is important for you, LP, you gotta get rid of your wheel bluffs, cause you, you gotta get rid of your bluffs in those spots.
I can't see his, his bounty power number.
Was my main takeaway, actually.
But it should be, it should be kinda high, so I'm guessing, yeah, go all in. We could probably add like three to four, four percent equity.
I would call.
Calling is probably not that. Yeah. But going all in.
It's an outlier.
Well, oh, yeah, we hit the outlier.
Yeah.
Or I have different numbers, uh, if the.
Yeah, I got a table here.
I have also a table here, and it's different than uh, what I heard.
You guys talk about the, the ants you went to go?
He was just spitballing, no, like what Joey's been trying to talk about, like this uh, bounty coefficient or whatever, I'm just going to paste a thing.
Yeah, paste it so we know, but I'm just trying to remember the numbers from.
Gets one, it's five percent, five point four, a night table.
So if you look in, uh, if you look in the chat, you can uh, open up that table, Louis. And this is one that's used by like uh, pads and the bit B stable, this is kinda the coefficients they use, so it's like, for every increase in uh, this bounty power. You can reduce the equity roughly by these percentages to call, so like you know, like, if you're doing a pot odds calculation, and there's like a bounty power of like one point five. And let's say you need forty percent equity call, well, you actually only need like thirty-two percent equity to call to justify the bounty.
Right, right.
But now I wanna put, put it, let's put it this way, okay, so this is the, here, hang on, this is the chippy V calling range, okay?
Yeah, I just didn't remember the numbers exactly.
So here, the bounty power is slightly positive, that means we should be calling slightly wider than that.
But we can't get his bounty.
Reduction, uh, yeah, you have to have the bounty available for this math to even work.
Okay.
So.
So uh, my question is, how do you figure out bounty power to figure out?
Now, his calling range of his equity is uh, based on our.
I. Can, it's a, it's a ratio of starting bounty to starting stacks. So it's like.
Beginning of the tournament, it is one to one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, cause you, you have one starting stack, and you have one starting bounty.
So if he loses half his stack without gaining any bounties, when he lo, loses half his stack, his bounty is now two to one.
So it's a lot of educated guesswork during, through the course of the tournament.
Oh, yeah, you're definitely, it's math across the way, so if you click like this, alright, look at these, you see forty big blinds, two hundred and fifty bounty. It's one point zero four, and then like you have forty-five big blinds. Is point nine three, so a starting stack is like forty-two big blinds, or something, you see, you see how I kinda got to that number?
Yes. Uh, so now, look at this scenario, we are thirty-five big blind effective, but we are covered by everybody, so how does that affect your RFI range?
Uh, probably uh.
I would think that makes us one or two pips tighter.
Yeah, definitely, cause we should be king four here, and here it's like king six, two pips.
Yeah, but not, yeah, I would say we don't have to uh.
Queen eight versus two pips and a half here.
You're removing on the offsuit branch, you're removing like sixteen, twenty, like you're peeling off like twenty-five combos on the offsuit branch, if not more, like maybe thirty combos, so it's like it's enough, like, to, to note.
So there's a big difference in your opening range as well.
You gotta channel the knit.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're covered to be, must be more netty, yeah.
Hi, that's already. Oh, no. What you guys wanna do here?
Uh, this is not a bad bluff, maybe? I don't like jamming, it's too deep.
Three.
Yeah. I like. I like raising off the offsuit aces at D stacks.
Uh, definitely three betting, not all in here.
Yeah.
Maybe uh, normally want to isolate him, so yeah.
Is there anything unusual we do here? We fold, folding pocket deuce. Um, king jack off, queen jack off.
This looks like a reasonable range to me.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Jack. Spade. So many outs.
I think our bluffs from the uh, like, middle, high card, middling cards are a bit tighter.
You could probably go bananas here, like, I wouldn't be surprised to see jams.
Or you cover everyone.
I so.
You definitely ISO, like, you're raising or jamming, I just don't know which, oh, well, hey, look, what do I know?
Yeah, it's just so, yeah.
It makes sense, because at this stack depth, with three bets, they're gonna be fun, right?
Well, I mean, what about king nine suited? King jack suited, it's the same.
King queen is just too good to jam.
So when you say bluffs, are you folding king jack suited if he four bet jams?
He not, uh, one of the biggest step for them jams, yes.
You're, you're folding on the other side of the all in, you're folding.
More blinds on the big blind, yes, if they are jammed, then you fold.
Whoa, okay, so king nine, that's an interesting question, Pete, if we three bet king nine in this arrangement, and the cutoff four bet jams, do we fold?
I know.
No.
Yes, the.
I don't think.
No.
The heuristic is going to be that you fold the ones on the other side of your jams.
Look at that price, Pete. We're. We can fold in six if you want.
I like where you're coming from with that, Pete, and I think there is merit to it, and I think it is a true heuristic in some spots, but I think we're calling king nine.
I.
Against the cutoff, maybe, but against the small blind or big blind.
Hey, man, you can, you can look at it, so we just have to go verse four bet, like, you just have to bring up the range.
Yeah, look at it, I'm with Peter, king nine.
It's gonna be a different range against every single player here.
Yeah, cause there are different.
Our range is gonna be loosest against the cuddle.
So.
We're gonna have to make a. Set off my. We're gonna have to make a slight modification is the only problem, like, cause it's a squeeze pot, so we're gonna have to look at like just a, you gotta take out the middle position raise.
Why?
Well, we don't have a middle posi, we don't have a multi-way range that's like calling a four bet. You have.
Can't we just look at where we have first, like?
Yeah, let's, let's, we can look at the range in the thing.
Yeah, but if you don't have multiple, yeah, then, 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 then the solution is completely different.
But if he folds, it cut off jam, we can look at that first, right? And then move forward to see what the other people may or may not do.
Cause you don't get to cheat like this in game, you gotta make a decision.
The, the theory is we're, we're testing a theory here, Pete says other side of the line of the jams is folding, you can test that regardless of if it's a squeeze range or not, like, that heuristic would stay true and just a heads up, hi, yes, Pete?
Um.
Or does that, are you?
In this one, there's like additional kind of risk because there's more people in the pot.
Okay, so.
Has to be a little tighter.
Okay, so, if it's just the cutoff, Pete, are you calling king nine then?
In a bounty, yes, because our, because his range is gonna be wide enough?
So if it's, if, so because that initial opener, even though he folds, that's gonna make the change for you?
No, with the initial opener folds, we're okay to go, cause you're still against the capped range that flatted there. But if the initial opener, if the initial opener jams, you're folding.
Right, and that, that's what I said.
And I think you're folding ace ten too, like.
If anybody, if anybody but the cutoff raises or raises our four bet, I think Pete's right. We fold everything below the shove.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Versus cutoff, I still think we fold king nine and ace ten, because he has zero, he's not four, he has zero four bet bluffs. You gotta fold your bottom of your range, right?
But if the, if it folds around to the cutoff and he shoves, I think we're calling off with king nine.
I know.
Yeah, the, the cutoff has a cap.
You're not playing. That, that's, that's, so you don't always have to fold your worst hands.
So uh, you're doing verse four bet, so thirty high jack versus three bet from the button, you don't.
So it could be that king nine is still fold, I mean, I don't know.
So forty big blinds, button versus four bet all in from the cutoff. See, it's not gonna be representative, because it doesn't have those same combos squeezing, right? So you can't really look at it unless.
Yeah, if he, Gailen, if he calls, then uh, he can uh, because he was covered by the early position razor, he's not supposed to call with a lot of fans. So that's pretty uh, damn uh.
Like, if the, if the small blind, the big blind or mid position jams here. Uh, king nine has gotta be a fold, and if the cutoff decides to. You just call off, cause he's already shown a capped range, and he has the best bounty value.
We need to put this in HRC.
Not really, Ken, because for me this guy jams, you have the price for the bounty, you already put like six or seven. Maybe against him, you fold, against him, you call, but.
Uh, that's what I think, indeed.
I mean, I still think we could put in HRC and see all of them.
Well, put it, put it in HRC, I don't know, man, if you three bet here, and even like, when you cover him that much, I think I still gamble here with.
So it's a lot of trouble, I learned to do PKOs in HRC, if I already have um like using a payout structure I already imported, doesn't jive with just inputting data and using it a different structure, like I.
You have to, have to write a payout structure also according to bounties.
I sent you the end close, Ken. So can we move on, you're gonna dig a bit further?
Yeah, but yeah, uh, yeah, you also have to know the payouts.
Yeah, I, I can't do it without, like, it fucks it up if you don't have it exactly right, I learned.
Well, I mean, this is, this is level one, the pale.
This is level one, yeah, it's really, it's chippy V for the rest.
So what you, what I gotta, so when I import a payout structure, it already has chips and average bags and all that in there, and then when I gotta input data, just in big blinds, there's gonna be a zillion chips and only so many big blinds, and it fucks the whole thing up.
Just send it to me, Ken, I'll do it.
It's in chat, I think.
Can you stop swearing, Ken, by the way?
I'm sorry.
Also, still difficult, maybe for forty-seven payouts. It's influencing the spot, the payout.
It's, it's very um, sensitive in PK.
I must have the same amount in payouts than in uh, bounty, in this case.
If it's an early level, you can do winner take all, that's how they, that's how everyone else does.
Yeah, or you just distribute it about uh, forty-seven, but it's a earlier stage, so you can do winner takes all.
What do you guys do here with queen nine and queen cap?
I mean, you could maybe.
Old.
I think you can maybe three bet this. It's offsuit tens.
Definitely a three bet that chippy V there. Definitely.
Yeah, definitely.
So maybe if we cover, we are at one pip wider, maybe Queen nine? Would that be insane?
It's risky business, man. He's just gonna pile it in our face sometimes.
No, I think adding Queen nine, because the hijack.
Ken, send me the hand.
Okay, I think if you add nine, you you're blocking his faults.
Ken is right. It's not even a call.
Because we because the small blind covers this.
Yeah, but also he has to be uh.
Is my guess.
He's covered by three persons, so he has to be tighter for himself also. So it's counterintuitive sometimes.
Yeah, look at his open range.
His opening range is tighter than a chippy V, probably.
It should be like ten, seven. It's still pretty much tens and sevens.
Yeah, but look at uh King nine, A seven, that kind of stuff. Not opening.
Huh?
Some suited hands are not opening.
Does it?
He's not opening King nine.
Yes, he is.
No, he isn't.
Louis just showed it on the thing.
Yeah, it was King ten, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, nine off, eight, eight, seven off. This is what he's talking.
King nine off and A seven.
The slivers. I don't even put the slivers into my game. I just cut them out pretty much.
Sixes here.
The offsuit hands had a tough combos.
See, it's actually uh suited sixes here almost.
Yeah.
Not all.
It's, I would say half a pip, half a pip cutter, yeah.
King for suited, queen, queen five, queen six.
It's about half a pip if you also reckon the offsuit ones.
Ah, so it looks like it's about eight hands, which is two pips tighter on the suited side and half a pip on the offsuit side. Right? You're dropping eight combos when you're covered and adding eight combos when you cover.
Yeah, but how do you count? Yeah, you have to uh.
A combo. Two pips on the suited and half a pip on the offsuit.
Yeah, but it's not on the Jack side, for instance. So only King and Queen and.
Yeah, well, those are your, those are your first.
Um.
Then ten, so this is not two pips overall.
No, we just saw this, this.
Oh, this is weird. These are only, these are only seven handed.
Yeah.
Huh, I wonder why they did that.
I don't know. Save time, maybe. It feels nitty to full. I guess this has to open.
Yeah, I'd still open this. Our bounty is high, though.
Yeah, the whole table covers this, but.
Yeah, just falls.
Still think we have to open it.
Oh, I'm in the money.
It's the first, it's not the first hand, but you have.
It's, this is early stage.
No one's got eliminated yet.
Playing the rooster zodiac in the money.
Hey, oh, Jeff.
Seven six is out, though.
Well, why don't you win yourself a turkey, Yas?
Yeah.
Wait, we should start paying attention to open ranges?
Yeah.
Uh, because.
It's one or two pip tighter or wider depending on.
Well.
You're covered by everyone almost.
This is probably bottom of range.
No, our our bounty power was really high and it looked like we were.
We were covered by everyone except uh big blind.
We were tighter than the last hijack hand we just looked at.
Yeah, because the the higher bounty power is, the more we are weak.
Yep. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say is there should be a correlation to as your bounty goes up, how much gets cut off from your range?
Yeah, true. If you are chasing you more, you must be tighter.
Gonna fold.
So if your bounty power is high, then you must be tighter. The yeah, the higher it is, the tighter you have to be.
Cover that guy who just.
Yeah.
Yes, wall line covers this, button covers this, cutoff cover recovers this. You wanna put chips in and get squeezed.
I don't know if it's a clear cut. It's ace five suited.
We cover.
This, this might be. This might be, have some tricks in there.
Yeah, it's a call.
Your call.
Wow, okay, this is definitely a deviation. Like, this is not a chippy V thing here.
Yeah, it can also be just how wide it is solved. I mean, how how accurate it is solved. I mean, it's difficult to say sometimes.
Right, over calling here with. But it's like under the gun, under the gun, one flats. Like low jack range should be like pretty strong here, no?
Yeah, quite a bit of bluffing.
Yeah.
You think the low jack, he's covered by everybody?
As I'm saying, there's quite a bit of bluffs in here. I would, I was tighter, dude.
But also, guys, he's covered by the undergun player, so he can't be, he can't, he can't raise almost. He can't bluff raise that much.
It's very linear. And we expand up to this.
Just, yeah, it it.
Oh, I see. I I I think I see what Ken was saying. Is our bluff range was linear and not polar?
It is more linear, yeah, because we are covered. He goes wider.
Um, the button's got a small bounty.
Yeah, but it's gonna be Y here, I think. But we can probably squeeze. I prefer suited, but I think the offsuit aces are gonna squeeze too.
Covers us, so it doesn't matter how how uh big his bounty is.
Ripper Rooney.
When he calls here, he's. No, but we cover the low jack. He's capped and we want to go after the low jack bounty.
All the cookies.
All the cookies.
Yeah. Old.
We're covered, right? So.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Even if we weren't covered, it's close, right?
It's close.
Yeah, so.
So how much do we expand here?
You make it straight, seven two fold, six two calls, I bet.
Oh, oh.
Oh.
So.
I show radio, huh?
Seven, three.
You guys scam me, man. I wasn't gonna fold that, but then everyone.
You know what? It's only a pip Y. You can go for it. It's not a big deal.
You I got scammed.
It's a big deal.
I just proposed a question.
I blame it on you guys. Probably on you guys.
Well, I was folding seven two for what it's worth, so I think I'm fine.
Uh, just call.
No.
You wanna jam into fifty big blinds?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Heads up, I can see it, but not uh multi-way now.
Now, he's at you.
Probably fine, but.
He's uncapped and he has you covered.
Dude, we're smoked versus that hijack range.
Oh, we do. Everything is six, so everyone is right.
Uh, we're great. We're geniuses.
I'm mostly right, though.
I'm more right.
Oh.
I don't know, man. See, this one, I I I'm more in like, maybe like flicking a chip.
Queen ten.
I fault, it's a queen seven off.
I mean, queen ten is my bottom.
Now, queen ten's definitely not the bottom, but.
Mine.
We are even covered by the N P, yeah, covering the.
If we covered the mid position, we can flip a chip, but we don't cover the mid position, so we have to fold.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Hit the floor.
Which chippy V?
Uh, I think.
Are we wider here?
To right.
Oh, yeah, we're we're wider than chippy V.
I think it's like Queen eight, maybe. It's it's like Queen eight. I'm pretty sure.
We can stack someone. I can stack the button potentially, Sean.
We have a chance. I'm Queen ten. I thought we were gonna be tighter here.
Well, you gotta remember.
Like, Ken, we can stack someone.
I'm with you on the queen ten, right, Ken?
They have half uh halftime.
Nine, okay. Yeah, I thought we were gonna be a little tighter.
No, we're gonna be wider, because his his bounty is available, so it gives us.
One of the bounties is available, not not both.
The the one that's already in the pot is available to us.
Ken, we're booty hunters, man. You wanna get the booty. You gotta get the booty.
Get the booty. You gotta get that booty.
And you guys think you just gotta put in one chip. So you're looking at pot odds. And when you get to add like five, whatever that number was, five or six percent. To the pot odds. Or or you're or reduce your required equity by five or six percent. This makes it a pot odds call.
Yeah, that makes sense. Like, you're probably expanding six percent there or something, maybe a little more.
Yeah.
Something like.
So here, right? Um. We got some pretty attractive coefficients here. I would probably call.
Ooh.
I I was just saying mixing, mixing.
I think I'm not playing this game right. After all these PTO games, I've played.
I'm going to get a red tag. They're gonna, I'm gonna get green tagged if I start implementing these ranges.
Get in the mix.
Yeah, we're gonna get time.
If I get caught jamming Jack ten off here versus those ranges, my word.
Like, they both call with aces and kings.
They're mistaken.
Jack, Jack, Jack. That's what's going on.
I'm gonna have to revamp my tagging system after this uh this session. I like calling here. You got you got position. It's too good of a hand, right?
It's not never on all of them.
No, no.
Only position.
You're you're the one at stake here.
At GTO, you guys never jam here? I handle.
No, no, man, you're you're too wide, I think. It's a good squeeze jam, but verse one range, I think you just call.
I think.
Later position, I could jam.
Jack nine suited might be a jam at chippy B. I just.
What do you guys jam here? Because I'm, I would jam this one. I would want jam King Jack suited. I would jam Queen ten suited. I would jam.
Yikes.
Yeah.
King ten and King Jack suited.
Honestly, I don't think I am jamming here. I don't think I have a single jam from this versus that position.
I mean, I'm gonna have some, but I'm mad at you, like three percent.
I just prefer taking this hand post flop. This is one of my hands. I really like to play post flop, so.
Might have like your ace five little world in there a little bit and.
Okay, so there is a a smidge, but not much.
One point.
Queen Jack suited. There you go. And then you got some fragments of these suited wheel aces.
I think you're better off just learning that you don't jam in this pot.
Yeah, well, Ace King, I mean, you do wanna kind of jam Ace King off, right? So I guess you have to find some, you got your tens, you gotta put your tens in there or nines and.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
They're always mixing, so you can do.
I think uh I think pocket tens and Ace King are literally the driving factor of this whole like part of the range.
Yeah.
Oh, look at this, five big blinds left.
Yeah. I was just gonna say.
Still not very fond of the Jack ten, right?
But it was mixing, so the E V is very, very close between.
There were work, Jack ten is a thing.
You're not really blocking any.
Yeah, as you get lower, like at twenty five, maybe.
I mean, we're just not gonna jam that many in position, man. If you go to like seventeen or something, I bet it'll be in there.
I guess I'll just get rid of the Jack then.
At twenty, yeah. Yeah, Louis.
I have not been a good idea after all.
I love to, I love to play this one in position post flop.
Uh, not against E P, I guess. So we're gonna take the call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm calling.
I I I called.
Oh, wait, we have no one covered?
No, no one got a fault.
I don't mind folding.
Yeah, we, oh.
The floor, you can do whatever you want, I guess.
That's fine.
Oh.
Paul.
He's gonna be wide because our bounty's high.
Yeah, we're in position, so I.
But we have high bounty, so we're cutting off.
Ooh.
No.
Mixing.
That would have been my bottom for what it's worth.
It's our duty to hunt that booty. Raise it up.
Man, this feels like. Do we jam this? No, we're too deep.
No. I'm not up and jamming.
How about, how about it like seventeen? I bet it jams.
I don't have enough bounty like um PK experience. Do we still lift the but um smell by blind off?
We can be wider than everything now.
This is our polar, polar, polar neatly.
It has a pretty high bounty power, so it's nine percent or something like that, but the.
Okay, leave that up for a second. Let me.
So we're sure this might start trickling into jams. If they were sure, I should say.
Yeah, we live.
Not older, like fifteen, not twenty.
Less equity in this position than normal.
Can we look at twenty?
If he has less chips, uh hit, our jam range is gonna start pulling from the suited sevens and suited fives. That have better equity when they get called. Our offsuit stuff isn't gonna jam as much. It's gonna be our suited side that expands the jamming range as it gets.
Yeah, I think I've seen that in the, Peter, do you know why the solvers do that? I've seen that before, but I can't explain why.
It has more equity when you're called.
Because the big blind can shuffle.
No, but why is it seven and sixes?
He can call while.
Because he never jams with a, like, he jams only A seven and A six, but he's gonna jam a lot more Broadway cards. So our outs are gonna be cleaner when we have the suited sixes and sevens.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's gonna be.
So the suited sixes and sevens are gonna be less dominated than.
Yeah.
And when we get called, the worst we're looking at is forty percent.
So we don't have it, I think.
You'd rather have. You must be aware that this that this is solveland, huh?
Yeah, one thing I want, I wanted, I wanted to get. Is like. When it starts to, because the problem here is the average is forty big blinds, so forty big blinds can be tough to be all in, like. A short stack opening, somebody ISO, and then it's on you. These kind of like more like uh. Reality driven scenarios, kind of, because now everyone is forty big blinds, like the beginning of it, right?
Yeah.
And it's gonna take a couple of months for them to get more sims in.
But we're not really hunting here, is what I'm saying. We're just constructing pre-flop ranges, you know.
Were you in the study group yesterday, Joey?
Yes.
Yeah, because that was the same heuristic we saw yesterday with blind versus blind play.
Yeah, I know. I I saw that, but I couldn't figure out why it was there. That's the question I was asking.
Three bet.
What study group are you talking about, Pete? You got you got sneaking study group stand without me?
Crazy sexes.
Oh, that's right, yeah, sixes, sixes, that's right.
Three bet.
Uh, I think we do three bet this.
I'm on that. Come on, I need two people to go out, then I can call.
So I think we might present an uncapped range here because of the big blind.
Do we three bet?
I think three betting might be more attractive than the uh than calling, but I think full, it's close, right? This is gonna be folding and three betting if it does anything. It just folds.
Queen Jack.
So King, so you got King ten off, isn't there, which is pretty obvious.
This is a logical expansion if you have a range construction problem already.
Thank you, Peter. Very good. On the button.
We can overcall here, I think.
Maybe, maybe a sliver, yeah.
Maybe a slip.
Trying to scan this poor guy.
We're here to make money, Louis. You know.
Jam.
I don't hate a jam here.
Fifty, no, it's too much.
I might go not all in, honestly, in game.
Too much. Yeah, too much to jam.
It's still jams.
Easy to jam.
Thirty five, forty big blinds, easy jam. Fifty big blinds, bit tasty.
Um, I think we call here primarily.
Am I selling?
Well, yeah, this is too good. This is a jam.
This is not a jam.
Jam.
Jam it. Jam is crazy.
It might be.
You're covered, you got you got fifty behind. You're covered all the way behind.
No jam at all, so it's King nine.
It's raising. We have a razor.
Want to disincentivize the other guys from getting in here and hunting that booty.
Yeah, it's a tough thing, right? Like balancing that. Okay, we can call here from what we've seen, I think.
Oh, we don't have.
Nah, nah.
But we cover the big blind, no? Oh, what? I need glasses. I thought that was a four. I thought that was Queen four.
Sure, sure, sure. One pip out. It's like, whatever, right? Like, it wouldn't be a disaster.
I think this.
I.
So in game.
I don't like.
I'm gonna say, in game, I'm folding. I'm folding here in game.
Nits.
But.
I think it's gonna have some raises and fold and mostly fold.
Low jack range is capped. Wow.
What do you, what are you, what are you guys crazy? I mean, it's a middle position and a low. What do you, what are you getting, what are you guys crazy? I mean, it's a middle position in a low jack range.
I want a suited hand.
We cover both.
I want a suited hand.
If we get a king or a jacks, it's gonna be like super small SPR.
Louis, who's scamming who? Who's scamming who here?
Yeah, right.
If you get the king, then uh you don't get stacks in unless the other one has king.
You're just, that low jack range is like gonna eat your lunch. He's got Ace King suited there.
So you wanna raise, you're raising, so King Queen is the best offsuit.
How could your lunch money be addressed with King Jack? There's no way.
I guess you don't want kicker issues when you hit your king versus EP.
So, oh, I see. He picked it like that.
Wait, is that an open limp with aces?
No, that's the flat call, so he's flat.
Oh, okay.
King is Jack. Oh, I see what we're doing now.
I thought he hit the MP.
Queen suited, King, Queen off.
This kid goes at the gym.
Yeah. He started working out in middle school, watch out.
Okay, I see, I see.
He's on steroids.
Yeah.
And you have to do that so people can't liberally like. Cold, three bet, four bet JMY just to hunt, cause they think you're in there too wide.
Well, yeah, they do that so you can't just three bet them with King Jack off.
Nah.
Call.
We can participate here.
And if you're on the table, you should do uh do that even more.
Okay, I might get out of line here. I'm jamming.
I may be good.
Yeah, it's jamming.
I'm raising. I'll raise this. I don't care. Judge me.
I judge you. I am judging you.
No, it's.
Judge me.
Cause we're at, we're at Queen seven. Chippy V.
By the way.
Queen five if we cover.
Lying, not good.
Oh, I'm not lying, man.
Everyone knows you, you've never opened Queen five up in your life.
I am so offended right now.
I do that on the button a lot, actually.
King call, maybe?
I actually did that last night.
I do wanna call here.
Yeah, I wanna call also.
Um.
Fold.
Fold, fold, fold.
Fold. No fold.
King nine suited?
No.
No, off.
King nine suited is an interesting question, Ken.
Yeah, King nine off, I'm not folding. King nine suited, I'm sitting here thinking for a couple of seconds. I'm checking his HUD.
I don't hate where you're at with that, Ken.
Ooh, King ten, look at this.
King nine suited's in there.
I'm checking his HUD. You're flirting with disaster jamming into Ken here.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Oh, King nine suited's in there.
Kind of.
That's what I said, right?
Uh, folds.
So we have a king, uh suited king.
I feel like, I feel like tossing a chip in here.
We don't have him covered. We can fold.
We have the, we have the big blind covered.
I'm gonna say it's King five, it'll skip King seven maybe, so maybe King five, King six.
Yeah, but maybe I'm more likely to get all in, so King four suited is a good hand.
Bottom of range, it's a call.
Yeah, it's cool.
Maybe I'm being nitty here. I don't think you guys are wrong. I think it is a call, but I would have.
Oh, you guys.
Oh, we have the sliver.
There's a sliver. Lines against CP.
We're s- we're saved by a sliver.
Five point eight six.
Five percent.
You guys are way out of line.
Worth it to hit the King five.
Yeah, just good.
Oh, bucket kings.
Never fold.
Happy days.
So wait, do you call? Do you call?
You can.
I call aces. Call aces. Not this.
I'm calling.
Oh, my goodness. What is this? I'm offended. I'm gonna go get a coffee.
Wow. You don't ever. See, man, I get no, I get no respect, no respect.
I know, I was with you with the call.
LP's only wanted one of the jam.
Yeah. He almo- he almost clicked the button before like anyone even said anything. That's how excited about a jam you were.
Well, look at the damn hand, it's fucking.
You're in position, three bet, wait to the flop to uh when he bets.
But Louis, whenever we can go to a flop at three to one SPR. Aces and Kings like to flat.
Especially in position.
It's it's less than three.
All I see here is like, do we cover him? Oh, we don't cover. We do cover.
Yeah, we cover.
We cover, so happy days. We got bucket kings.
He's gonna see bet.
Guess yours is gonna be two to one.
LP, you're in a small, hold on.
You can fold. You have to deep.
You're in a small blind, LP. You three bet. What are you gonna do on any flop?
Say that.
You're gonna see bet.
You're gonna shout.
Get those chips.
Hey, uh Louis, if you let me share for a second, I got some interesting results here from that HRC hand.
I thought we would.
News is in, you're all nets.
Is ace, oh man, I thought ace ten, I would fold.
Entire screen. Alright, so to get you an idea of what we were looking at, my, sorry, excuse my uh desktop, it's a freaking mess. But to remind everyone, it was like EP open. Cut off, call, so let's go back to this range first. This is our range facing these actions. So what's the button calling? The button's getting in there with qui- or the cutoff's getting in there with quite a bit of stuff here. It's not. It's like whoever said it. It's a relatively capped range protected with like Ace Queen a little bit, but pretty capped. So we come in here from, wait, this is, sorry, this is the calling range from the cutoff. Ace Queen's in there, okay? And it's got like fragments of aces and kings, so.
Gay, Gaylen, can you expand that? It's hard to see.
I can. Yep, sorry. Does this help?
Yes, much better.
Okay, wonderful. So this is the range from the cutoff, and then we, it said it wanted a call. From the button, right? So that's primary response from King Queen off here. We're actually calling, overcalling like a bunch of stuff. I don't know how this like, it'd be interesting to look how this agrees with the. The PFA range, which we can do.
Didn't we have King nine to ten? King nine suited we were talking about?
We had King Queen off.
Oh, right, right. We were talking about King nine.
Right, so.
Uh, for what it's worth, ace ten O was in our range in the uh sim.
Mm-hmm. So the buh, what is going on here? I'm in the wrong tree. So we need to be down this tree. So here's our three betting tree. So there's fragments of it in there. It's like, okay, okay, okay. Um, so we go back to the under the gun player. Um, their four bet jamming. All of these pairs, top of the range, very linear range, like this, this squashes King Queen. Like, we're in poor, poor shape here, right? Um, the overcall range. Jacks, Queens, Kings, aces, like we're, we're trash here. This is like, we're just gonna be losing a lot here, so. Anything, anything that you three bet here, basically, you're calling with. You don't care. Like, we know we're, we're like miles behind all of these hands. But like tens are still getting in there, some nines, ace ten. Ace Queen, Ace Jack.
But the King nine folds, the Ace Jack O folds, Ace Queen O's folding quite a bit.
Right, and so it's like, there's some interesting stuff here, like we could mess with the ranges a little bit. Like King Queen off has got horrible, horrible, horrible blockers.
It's like if a block says first two point nine, so that's a lot of.
But who shovelled here?
Well, so the, the initial shover was this under the gun chap.
Okay, yeah, that's why I said we would fold those hands to the under the gun, but. We'll probably call some of them with the, against the cut off. If the under the gun folds and the cut off shoves.
Well, if you wanna look at that, we can look at that too, but this is like with both, this is with both people in the pot. So like, with both people in the pot. It doesn't like Kings and Queens really at all, but like tens are clean, so it's okay with going in with tens and like an ace ten, king and a ten, whatever, you know. But like, okay, so let's say you guys wanted to see where just the under the gun player jams.
Yeah, middle position folds.
Nah, nah, the. Cause we're talking about.
We three bet.
Under the gun folds.
One at a time, please. One at a time. Okay, so we three bet from the button. Do you wanna look at the early position guy first, or do you wanna look at the cutoff?
No, we're, we're having the argument about the cutoff guy.
Okay, so we'll say cutoff four bet jams.
Yes.
Okay, and then this is our calling range from the button. So now we're like mixing folds and calls, full frequency calling with King Jack here.
We're gonna call King nine.
Here, this is like. Full weight proportional, so it's like, if you did this with King Jack you're calling. The, the king and the queen are kind of bad blockers. I guess it's the queen. If you see fragments of folding, it's just because how it interacts with this specific range. Obviously, so like. Yeah, bad blocker, bad blocker, bad blocker, like you don't wanna be blocking this and unblocking this, I think is kind of like. The story here, but we're still doing okay.
King nine suited calls ace ten off folds. That was interesting to me.
It's a suited.
So. I think that's a function of this, right? So the tens, you don't wanna be blocking the tens, cause the only one that four bet jams is pocket tens.
Right.
Like, you'd have to, you'd add, you'd have to add some nuance to really get like a robust response to see like where the lines are drawn, but. Uh, I mean. Given this, you don't, the, the synopsis is, when you're covering here and you three bet, you don't fold much. Like, I know this is a little misleading, because this is like fragments of all of these combos, but any combo you show, any combo you three bet with, for instance, King eight suited. Uh, you, you should be stacking off with here because.
You can see it in top line again, that's zero point four percent fold versus four point five percent calls. So that's uh only ten percent are falling.
Right, so that shows you. And now like, just for, since we have it here, let's look at first this under the gun guy. So we'll say he four bet jams. And um we're paying a little more respect here.
Yeah, cause he has us covered.
Against one point five versus three point five. That's a.
Hold on. So one second, let's go back here. So we're gonna look at the under the gun guy, which is MP in the scenario. This is his jam range. So we'll say he jams and we'll look at the.
We're gonna be more respectful, I think.
Yes.
We are, we are being a bit more respectful.
Exactly what we thought. We had it spot on.
Five percent.
King nine was calling the cutoff and folding to the EP.
We, we folding thirty percent fans.
Right, so. Yep, the earlier position guy's gonna have a stronger range, so you call off more linearly.
It's also, it's expensive.
It's more expensive.
It is more expensive. That's another function. Yeah, it's more expensive. While the other guy, um. Is presenting a more capped range, so we can get in there with some of these more like polar combos, kinda like how everyone was pointing out.
Yeah. What does it look like, what does it look like if. Early position shelves and then cutoff calls the shove?
That was the end, that was the first simulation I kinda looked at.
Oh, okay.
I'll look at it again briefly, since we're here. So under the gun.
That was a really tight one.
So we'll look at cutoff right here. Cutoff doesn't have much here, like this is the nuts if he's calling. And it's like, these are fragments. This is not full frequency. So this puts our range here on the button. Like. I mean, if you wanted to simplify this, you could just say Jax plus Ace King. But uh. Like, ace ten's pretty attractive here. King ten's in there.
Fifty percent.
Had a gamble, son.
Yeah, but this is actually a lot looser than. Chippy V when the cutoff is still in the hand.
Yeah, but there's a bounty to be known.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, that's part of the function, right? There's bounties in play here. Yeah, like say ten, because you wanna unblock them having pocket kings and pocket queens, and you having the ace. Correct, correct. Like if they have, like you, you want the clean out with the ten, so if they show up with Ace Queen. You got tens. If they show up with Kings, you got the ace. Like.
So depends.
It doesn't really care that you're gonna show up here with thirty percent equity. A lot, or less. But uh. There you go.
Yeah, from each.
Very nice. Hey, thanks for running it. Very interesting.
Yeah. Uh, I think we probably fold here.
Think we call.
You might honestly, like, these are, this is, this would be a combo.
Yeah, I'm pipping this.
We unblock and we cover.
Yeah, suited connectors, huh?
Yep, there you go. Yep. You unblock and you cover. Those are two important characteristics here. Um, did you get out of line here, or do you just call?
Just go. Hey, oh, just go.
Are you getting out of line with the offsuit or suited aces?
Always offsuit, always. I'm sorry, what you would. If we're talking about jamming, I think you wanna be jamming the suited ones.
That's about what I thought, but I'm not sure if I go all in with ace ten. I think I'm squeezing, but not all in.
But so like, look at the.
Calling this guy.
With ace ten.
Look at the, look at the suited combos, though, like you're, you're stretching almost all the way down, like Ace five, Ace four is in there, so.
Yeah, if they were giving us Ace five here, we're screwed. I was not jamming Ace five.
I can say that now.
Yeah, and now they're testing you.
Well, you're now exclusively after bounty, sometimes you have that additional fold equity and pick up pots too, right? So.
Well, they're, they're, they're conflicting things, right, Ken? Like, half of the prize pool is on the head, and then the other half is at the end of the tournament, so you gotta balance that. I think we probably just call, I guess. I don't know, man. I like folding this, I think.
I fold, but since we cover both, we can.
Yeah, I, I've played um PKOs where I didn't even cash, but still. Profited.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's. That's the thing. Um, maybe some three betting, maybe some three betting. I think we're gonna primarily be calling here.
Yeah, I also think calling mostly, King Queen can save it more.
I think we call because we, at this, this is gonna create a bad SPR for this type of event, whereas if we just call, like it's, PR is gonna be good enough.
Mm-hmm. Generally correct.
Mm-hmm.
Man, like, I fold, I fold in game, but.
This is at Chippy V, like the bottom of your calling range, but he covers us, so we're.
Yeah, so we cut it out.
Well, maybe.
Say I'm still calling.
Yeah, I wasn't so confident. I do fold that in game.
This is.
Free bet range is robust.
Yeah, it's probably easier via, because it's uh only ninety-nine point seven percent like calling.
I like that it doesn't have a not all in four betting size here, like it's just jams.
Yeah, you're out of position, so yeah.
Man, so this. This is, this is, dude, this is trouble.
We are covered, so we can't uh.
Honestly, like folding, I think folding is very reasonable here.
It's not fold.
He overcalled, uh.
You're doing very poorly versus those ranges.
LP.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's all in or fold, but I would fold.
You guys not jamming here?
I'm not folding.
I don't know. I, I. I couldn't, I didn't, I wasn't sure about the all in, but I couldn't get behind folding this.
Yeah, you gotta fold this.
Garbage.
Not garbage, but uh.
It's a trap.
It's a call.
This is a call, we cover.
Yep.
I don't know, man.
Oh, we are too wide.
Yeah, don't understand when you want to call, but.
Eh, King four's a call.
Yeah, same thing.
Not, not that uh bit at least.
Hunting booties.
Not that far, far off.
You mean you're punting booties?
In booties.
No, 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 don't fold.
You guys serious?
Serious call all day.
Look how big his bounty is.
Uh, I mean, it mostly folds, but I'm still calling.
By the way, by the way, his bounty's not changing. These are all the same bounty. They're all two hundred and fifty dollars. It's just like. The, the ratio. By the way, by the way, his bounty is not changing. These are all the same bounty. They're all two hundred fifty dollars. It's just like the, the ratio.
Uh, yeah, the bounty power is what I'm talking about. Yeah, there's no way I'm ever calling nine seven.
Is the bounty versus average stack uh, ratio. I know the starting stack ratio.
I would call here, I think, maybe. Oh, you're, you're.
No, I think, I think we're a little tighter because we're.
Oh, we call it. I know, yeah. We cover both.
We don't, we're, we're, we're covered by everybody.
Oh, we cover both.
No, we don't.
Oh, then I would fold indeed, no.
Uh, raise.
Raise. This is a limp.
Yeah, I, it's gonna mix.
You learn too quickly again, otherwise you're in it.
This is good enough. Raise. Raise.
Oh.
Good enough to raise.
So this looks a good bit different than Chippy V actually, way different.
You can bluff more if you uh, cover and uh.
Up the range for Chippy V.
If you don't.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, the range in Chippy V is different, but we cover the big blind, so we're incentivized to start growing the pot.
Raising, yeah, we're raising way more, right?
Yes.
It's not that much different, to be honest. Looks, it looks, it looks reasonably the same.
Percentage of hands were we open raising?
We're raising thirty point four at Chippy V.
Oh, it does look better somewhere.
Go back to the other one, see what, what our raising range is.
You are more aggressive.
Yeah.
But it's still pulling from like the same buckets, if you will.
Just uh, more frequencies.
Uh, just be aware, this is not included future.
Oh, what's the sizing difference? Point twenty five. Uh, here it wants to go to three point twenty five, whereas G2 Wizard has a three point five.
Okay, so that will reduce the amount of hands you raised, this larger size, I imagine.
Yes.
That's true.
So less raising in the suited area. More limping. Okay, so less raising in general. But these offsuit are more pure.
More raising in general.
Raise forty one percent. Oh, more, right? Yeah, more.
But only you raise more.
Oh, you guys are right.
So that's.
More raising.
You can't compare the sims because it's uh.
Because the big, we're incentivized to grow a pot with the big blind being, his bounty being at risk.
Oh, flick it in, Louis, flick it in.
Lick it.
Never. No, it's in there. He's got, he's got a large bounty power. Or bounty index, whatever you want to call it.
Your outs are also very clean here.
Wow, I think you have to call.
Wow.
Oh.
Rebet, not all in.
Gotta get in there with that shit.
If I start to call this, my PT four, that's a basically going to be a mess. If you're finding all the crazy raises, you'll just.
Call.
Uh, I just, I just jam, man.
What about calling? Right, hang on, think about it.
But we don't cover.
Think about it a little bit. We are covered. How's that gonna affect our range?
He's gonna call wider, so we're gonna get more value out of.
We have more linear raising.
Yeah. This, I don't think this is hard.
But we are in position.
Kings we can call, queens two weeks.
All right, squeeze jam, I'm all in.
All in, too deep. Fifty big.
Uh, hijack's got us covered. Man, I think I call.
I'm all in.
Call or we raise, we don't go. I like call. You're not all in, Gavin.
I like raising.
I'm all in.
You're not all in.
I'm seventy percent positive, this is all in.
No, it's a race. You're fifty effective, do you not see?
But we're at a position.
You, you're fifty effective. Are you gonna stuff fifty big ones?
Yes.
It's a very linear range and that you are, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't notice a lot of the ranges are linear and not polar.
Well, it's a squeeze range, so, yeah, to squeeze, that's why.
It depends if you cover or not. If you don't cover that, raise.
Look at Ken. Why you wanna raise king seven off?
Blacker.
King seven, seven's the magic one. King seven suited and offsuit.
King seven, king six.
Yeah.
To be fair, I wasn't jamming.
It's okay.
Right.
We are covered. So we, we.
Put it in.
No, no, we cover them.
No, we covered them. That was easier.
Have you are out of position.
Right, this is, this is a fold. What are we doing?
Yeah, what are we doing?
Oh, you can.
It was mostly raised.
Get in there.
Uh, I raise.
Call.
I check back. Oh, no, I raised. This hand wanna raise this depth. Yeah, this is.
These suited like gappers, these, yeah, these low suited gappers do like to raise.
Yeah.
Oh, cuz we cover. This is like, I, I fold this game, by the way, but.
Uh, this is close.
It's close.
On the button, I'd call.
I was fold.
Call the button, fold cutoff.
Never fold this, never fold.
Uh, we can three bet or we can call.
Woo.
Ace deuce, ace six, there you go. King four.
King four, king five, king six.
Yeah, it's pulling from that.
A bit more chuck.
Uh, we're, we're covered.
We're, we're covered. We gotta be a little more respectful of the race.
Holding.
Dude, hand in position, just call.
Yeah, falling, Ken is right.
So it's not jamming.
Always. So that's not jamming. Jam linear.
Louis is having a revelation right now.
You don't have extra equity if you're covered.
Yeah.
Some, sometimes there are still some bluffs, but.
Oh, I'm ready to go broke here and jamming.
Wait, slow down. Where's the one under the pressure?
Whatever, it's fine.
Honestly, if you look though, ace, ace queen, ace ten, ace queen off, like, it's just balancing. If you're jamming this, you're not making a huge mistake here.
Only a balancing mistake, that's not most, not spoiled by most players.
My heuristic is squeeze come mostly from the suited side, so I see that, hey, that's a snap jam, fucking squeeze.
I'm okay with folding. Fold cuz we're covered, call if.
You didn't cover.
Fold.
Fold, yeah.
Oh.
Ooh.
Joey.
It's the cappers, not the two cappers.
Hmm, we cover, I call.
Razor fold.
It's the bottom.
Cover, man, I call.
Uh, we do cover, yeah, call.
Yeah.
Oh, my god.
I'm sorry, Ken.
No, I was with you. I, I was with you. I missed that we covered that much, by that much actually as well.
Uh, I check.
Check.
I like checking as well.
Ooh.
Much as well.
I am, me too.
I'm like, fuck you, dude. You don't get to do this. I'm calling.
But wait, how are you calling that?
Falling, man.
Cuz this is when I get mad. I'm like, this isn't a thing. I'm calling.
I'm falling. I do that with ace.
Oh, man, that's hilarious.
Snap this guy off. What does he have?
Like half a percent.
Yeah, it's tens, ace jack and uh.
Two percent.
Let's break for king five. We block king five, no!
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna suck out on twos, threes and fours.
We block king five and we block ace deuce. This is a disaster. It's great for pocket deuce. We need him to have pocket deuce. If he has pocket deuce. Okay.
Eh, it's ace six off, you're gonna chop, you're fine.
Okay, deuce never lose.
We didn't cover, so.
That's right, Eric. That's right.
Fold.
Oh.
Uh. Uh, where the big? No, no, we're short, we're the short stack. I have a figure. I have a face card in our hand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we are covered. Uh, we don't cover.
Okay, okay, yeah, we're covered, we're two pips tied or one.
Yep.
Call. Raise.
Ew, anything?
Fold.
Yes, not.
So that's not, I think it's a jab at Chippy.
Do we, we don't cover anyone, so fold.
Yeah. And our bounty looks.
Nine or ace ten, something like that, I don't know.
I thought it was a call because we're short and we have an ace.
Bottom range.
But you're against two pretty strong ranges, fairly strong ranges anyway. Hijack cutoffs like eh.
And I want a non-all-in raise here, but it might jam.
Non-all-in, jacks and tens.
Rip it.
Okay, I would rip here sometimes. The queen's not great. We're blocking.
No, we saw it.
Yep, I know.
We saw it. Oh, my goodness.
Nice.
What did we see?
Not this.
Not this. It, it was flipped.
Yeah.
Because. We cover, we cover the opener.
Yeah.
Yeah, buttons.
And yet, and the other way, the other one we saw, the opener covered us and the caller was the one at risk. Uh-huh, I didn't notice that.
Buttons kinda captured, he's wide, he's captain wide. Buttons in here with the nine seven suited, like.
Yeah, buttons, buttons in there with a capped range and hijack is the one we're going after.
You gotta, you gotta. You gotta love how this game will constantly humble you. Right when you think you gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
I see how wide the button's range is. He's super wide. This is why I thought we could jam.
It's very interesting to do uh, this.
I six suited.
Yeah, 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 we're gonna do more of this on the next session.
I must run some uh, HRC runs.
So it is nine seven.
Do it myself.
Well, look, he's raising top of range. All these aces, all those like nines plus eights or plus.
This only uh, when you start, imagine how to change this one uh.
So when it falls, the button's gonna probably have to call. Or is he gonna call all his pairs?
Yeah, I think this is probably the most interesting takeaway for me today. Like, you have to pay attention in these multi-way spots to who's presenting an uncapped range. So like, if you're covered by the uncapped range, you have to be a little more respectful linear. If you're covering the uncapped range, you can start pulling from some of these more.
Suited connectors.
Suited connectors and you can broaden a little bit, right? Yeah, pretty cool.
One of the interesting thing we uh, we didn't spoke, it's uh, it's early in the tournament, so everyone have a single bounty. But imagine if you, someone have three or four or five bounty already, it's gonna be crazy.
Well, it'll change things, right? You just have to calculate that uh, that ratio and it'll still like factor out and give you the idea.
All right, so.
Depending on uh.
I, I wanna keep some time to show some hands, to review some hands. So let's do that quickly. Um, so this one was a spot where this guy opened, jammed seven big blinds. And I was here with thirty big blinds. What do you guys?
Triggered. Ken's already triggered.
I know.
Well, I already answered this. I mean, I call every time.
So. What do you guys think? Seven big blinds and? What do you guys do?
Call or jam is what I said.
You're cut off and he's. Hijack. I would jam.
You jam, y'all. But there's a bunch of big stacks that can wake up.
And uh, Louis, you are relatively close.
But you can't fold anymore, almost.
Now, this, this one is twenty, thirty players left.
Okay, so.
I ran it in Chippy V LP.
Oh, well, this is thirty players left.
You should take it, it can, it, it affects things.
How many pays?
Like uh, five hundred?
Three, three hundred, five hundred, like it's a very big tournament.
Are you already way in the money?
Yeah.
This is like point one.
Approaching like final two, final three tables.
Yeah, but I shame is not that high. I mean, it's not.
It's starting to be high again because of final tables and.
Yeah, final table is high, but before that, it's slowly increasing.
That, we're, we're in there.
Especially on GG, yeah, because final table is uh, it's a big, big pageant.
So I'm. I'm guessing we're approaching.
Honestly, at ICM, I think you're legally gonna lean even more towards a call than a jam.
I would just jam.
So what I went is that I clicked it. And then this guy went all in.
Almost.
And then I folded.
Yeah.
Oh, when you click it and that guy goes in behind you, I like the fold a lot. Like you are uh, you're just smoked.
I thought it was the way to play this.
Yeah, I'm not so confident about the click. I, I kind of.
It's half your stack, eh?
Then, no, I have thirty bigs. It's seven. On the click is off my stack, yes.
Yeah, the click is almost half.
I did run this worm.
Behind, so.
The ace tree is not in there, right?
That's the reason I would jam.
I let this run overnight on HRC for Chippy V. If you wanna see that, I mean, I think it's probably gonna be similar heuristic, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just slightly different, uh, but not that much.
Might be just a little bit tighter with the bottom of the range might come out, but.
I played a live mystery bounty. Do you think the range adjustments for being covered or not somewhat similar? Plus or minus a pip? I think heuristically, uh, Barney, you should approach it. Using the same philosophy, like pre-flap ranges live are gonna be different. They're gonna be tighter generally. But uh. Yeah, you should.
Uh, LP, why don't you show the HRC before you move on? Or you don't think it's wrong?
Yeah, man.
You ran it that uh, uh, Chippy V?
Yeah.
It's ICM.
Yeah, but it's gonna be close. I think you're just gonna shave off the bottom of your range. I think you're gonna, the heuristics, I don't think the heuristics are gonna change, honestly.
But did you also do it with the main click uh?
So this is the, yeah, I did. This is the main click, which I thought was really not a thing. So this is what the main click. And then I did it without the main click.
Right, so.
This is the calling range.
Can you look at ace ten uh? Ace ten off, how, what differences between uh, spot, main clicking, et cetera?
So I sent them two images. One is with how to force it to have a main click and this is like more.
This is the original strategy, right?
Yeah, it doesn't say the difference uh, in EV, so uh, we don't know now what to, yeah, okay.
Well, you get to jam a bit more.
What I mean, Ben, if, if the EV difference between main clicking and calling is small, then he didn't make a mistake. I mean.
I agree with you, y'all. But uh, that's just what I thought was gonna be the best play. I guess we'll have to run it a bit. Bit more.
Well, I can run it again. I still have it.
Yeah.
Just re, sorry, set up.
This one here, uh, we are in the ring event yesterday, the five twenty five. And I was wondering, my question here is, should I have bet the river for ten value? So I raise, he calls from the small blind. Uh, on the flop, you go, it's multi-way. Big blind calls as well. Check, check. And then on the flop, I bet small. Uh, on the turn eight, I drink, I make it. And then I bet big, almost uh, eighty percent pop, he calls. And then on the river, the flush, the backdoor flush comes in, the board pair. Do you guys go for value?
You're bored.
You're only getting called by chops and everything else is raising you, which means you have to fold, like, I don't see.
What I thought, but until, until I saw his hand.
Well, I mean, this, dude, he may, honestly. He blocks all the full houses, man. He blocks both full houses. Like I bet his hand is a great bluff raise.
Yeah.
And I bet like, if he bluff raises you here, like what do you do? You gotta fold versus raise. You're just like.
Can't almost not bluff raise, because the, yes, less than a pot size uh, stack uh, behind, so.
It's true. I mean, that's true, but.
You call in, so. There's no bluff raising.
I feel like you're just making your life uh, difficult if you raise this river with this hand.
Uh, it's.
What are you hoping for? A crying nine or something?
Yeah, or exactly this hand can clean.
Yeah, so, okay. Probably two ten.
Yeah, I agree. It's, I wouldn't raise you. I would call.
I sent you a couple hands, Louis.
All right, Jenson, I gotta dip out. Alright, Jents, I gotta dip out.
I'm also logging out.
Alright, thanks a lot, guys. Have a good one.
Thanks, guys.
Big blinded fans on the flop bet call, that seems fine. On the turn, he bets big. Oh, that's, that's Dave. That's so cute. So Dave leads the turn four because it pairs. He does it from the small blind. That's not, okay, so he's barreling. I see what he's doing. He's just, he thinks he has that pair blank versus blind. Weak sizing on the turn. If I was him, I would just go pop. Uh, the raise size duly, you suck.
Too small? Really? I can't, I can't.
Way too small, man. You got him locked up. This is, you get your scam card, alright? So when you get your scam card, just go super scam. You think he's gonna fold anything to you?
Is win check, check, wow.
Yeah, he's definitely not gonna fold an ace, so.
So I, here, he makes it six, I would make it twenty. And then whatever he does, I'm just trying to stuff all the cookies in, alright? Then on the river, what the hell is this disaster?
Yeah, so, so that's, that was the main question.
The main question, what? What the hell are you doing? What's wrong with you, duly?
I was scared of full housing.
Are you serious?
So duly, you're having a four blocks, him having some full ha, a lot of full houses here? So your straight gets to go for its value.
What do you think he has? Pocket aces?
No, I was just thinking like maybe pocket threes, pocket fives.
Honestly, with this hand, against somebody I know, I make it twenty on this turn. He calls or whatever, and then on the river, I'm just stuffing.
Did you invest it on him or what?
Yeah. What's up?
Did you, did you invest on him or what?